Good evening and welcome to the June 26, 2025, Lenawee County Board of Commissioners meeting. I would ask the cellphones to be silenced, please, with the exception of law enforcement and emergency services. And I would ask everyone if they would please rise. We'll have a moment of silence, which will be followed by the invocation by our county clerk Roxanne Holloway, along with the pledge. And if everyone would please join me in a moment of silent reflection for a friend of Lenawee County, Tony Cuevas, a veteran, former Michigan State Police Post Commander, Chief of Police for the Village of Clinton, and our own Chairperson for the Emergency 911 District Board. Thank you.
Let's pray. To Heavenly Father, as we gather this evening, we just pray for your blessing upon this meeting. Unite our hearts and minds in common purpose. Grant the wisdom to work together. May the discussions and decisions be a reflection of your goodness, Lord. I ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
By the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the Constitution, I am honored, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Clerk Holloway. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Unst.
Here.
Monsieur Blanco.
Here.
Monsieur Collins.
Commissioner Daley.
Here.
Commissioner Krasny.
Here.
Monsieur Martis.
Here.
Monsieur Stimson.
Here.
Monsieur Tillitson.
Here.
Commissioner Van Doren.
Here.
Nine present.
Minutes are approved.
Oh, that's your scroll.
Excuse me. Approval of the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes? We've changed the policy and they are now on the website and they're not included in the packet, so we're not sure if everyone had a chance. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes? Anybody? Okay, we're going to vote on it unless anybody has not had a chance. Okay. Minutes of the June 11, 2025 meeting would be in order. Approval.
So move.
Support.
I have a motion by Commissioner Martis, supported by...
Commissioner Blanco.
Commissioner Blanco. Additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Minutes are approved. Amendments to the agenda? Commissioner Unst.
I would like to ask that we postpone the resolution proclamation honoring the firefighters and the emergency responders. There's a scheduling conflict for tonight and I'll try to get it on our July Board of Commissioners meeting.
Okay. A motion to approve the agenda with the change?
Support.
I have a motion by Commissioner Collins.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Martis. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, no. Motion carried. Petitions and communications?
Repugee.
I, we received a resolution from Washington County and it's a resolution opposing the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services plan to implement a competitive procurement process for prepaid inpatient health plans. And that's all that I have.
Anybody else? Thank you. Introduction of special guests. Thank you. Limited public comment on agenda items, three minutes for any item that's on the agenda. There's forms to fill out on the podium for people that want to speak and have to be passed up here to the Chair. So, Mr. Gillum, please. Please state your name and your residence.
Well, my name is Todd Gillum, Cambridge Township here. Also Chairman of the 5th Congressional District of the Michigan Republican Party.
Is that, is that my...
I got it. I got it. Yeah, my name is Todd Gillum from Cambridge Township and Chairman of the 5th Congressional District of the Michigan Republican Party. I'm speaking today as a concerned citizen who values limited government, personal liberty, and fiscal responsibility. I strongly oppose the use of licensed reader cameras in our community. I believe government's power should be restricted and accountable. These cameras track every vehicle that passes, not just criminals or suspects, but law-abiding citizens going about their daily business. That's a dangerous overreach and it's exactly the kind of surveillance that should be, that should concern anyone who values our constitutional rights, particularly our Fourth Amendment protections against unreasonable searches. We don't need more government watching us. We need government doing less and doing it better. In addition to privacy concerns, we should consider the cost. These systems are expensive, tens of thousands of dollars upfront, plus ongoing maintenance, storage, and data sharing agreements. And for what? Studies show these systems have limited effectiveness in preventing crime or recovering stolen vehicles. We're talking about a high-cost, low-return surveillance tool. Worse yet, the data can be shared with private companies, federal agencies, or even accessed by hackers. Once it's collected, it is out of our control and possibly out of our jurisdiction. That opens the door to abuse and unintended consequences down the road. We don't need to become a surveillance state to keep our communities safe. There are better, more proven ways to reduce crime. Investing in patrol officers, neighborhood watch groups, and infrastructure like street lighting, all of which align with local control and personal responsibility. I respectfully ask the Board to vote no on LPR cameras. Thank you for your time and commitment to serving our community.
Thank you. Mr. Witty?
Yeah, thank you, Jim. My name is Matt Witty from Raisin Township, 6766 North Raisin Center Highway. I just want to comment quickly on the agenda item, the unfinished business regarding the Tecumseh Products property. My wife Vivian and I are delegates in District 3 of Raisin Township and our property almost practically is up against the Tecumseh Products. We're just south of Russell Road across the way, you know, and on behalf of ourselves, the neighbors, all the people in the area, we see that piece of property as essential and what happens to it certainly affects us, but it affects everybody in the community. And from our standpoint, we think, you know, you look at the foundations of America, you know, the matter that that was a Fortune 500 company, it was really the anchor of the city of Tecumseh when it was Tecumseh Products. And it would really, I think, behoove the community to see an industrial-type application brought back into that area, to bring in jobs, you know, to attract people to the area. For what it's worth, on my personal history, would say that, you know, I've lived in this community for almost 30 years and what brought me here was actually a job in Washtenaw County. When I left that job, I was unable really to find work in Lenawee County with my particular specialty engineering, at least work that suited me. And if we had more good, high-tech type, you know, or even manufacturing, because manufacturing like Tecumseh Products does bring engineering and white-collar type support, and thus is necessary, I think. So rather than consider, you know, alternatives like retail or entertainment or whatever it might be, I think, you know, the basic use of that property would most definitely serve the community with an industrial or manufacturing-type application. And that's just the comment I wanted to make. You know, the Board has to make the decisions as necessary. I mean, I realize we're not an Economic Development Council here. We're the Lenawee County Commission, but we happen to own that property and I think it's important to make a responsible decision in terms of how it should be used. So on behalf of myself and the people in that area, and I think the community at large, that's the feedback that I wanted to provide. Thank you.
You're... Resolutions and proclamations were postponed. Special presentations this evening. So we'll go to standing committee reports. There's a limited number because of the last meeting. Criminal Justice, Commissioner Collins?
Criminal Justice met on the 24th. The only item on the agenda was the flock cameras. The discussion, I think, assuaged a bunch of many of the concerns about, for many Commissioners. There was a kind of agreement that there would be a specific policy that addressed all concerns that Commissioners had. We've saved the retention period. But it was approved to be passed forward to Ways and Means at the next Ways and Means meeting for approval to go on to the Board of Commissioners.
Questions for Commissioner Collins? Thank you, Terry. Board appointment reports, bridging the gap. They seem to be all yours tonight with Commissioner Collins, so...
Bridging the gap met on the 18th of June. Applicant reviews were to start in July of this year because of the number, which was somewhat unexpected, of the applicants. We'll be meeting twice a month for the balance of the year in order to review, oh, excuse me, review all the applicants, which we done, there are, I believe, 28 applicants. We also reviewed a, scored a mock presentation so we could review the scoring process and how it was done and reviewed the scoring process. That was it.
Questions for Commissioner Collins? Thank you for that, Terry. Department on Aging, Commissioner Collins?
Department of Aging met this afternoon. We received a presentation from Barb Phillips, who is the Home Services Director for the Department of Aging. She handles the programs that do at-home stuff, the home services. 21 of the staff that she has are involved in home services, so they will go and spend a certain amount of time, they're referred to as units, but really they're hours, shopping for the person, making purchases for them, doing things that a person would normally do, that these homebound people cannot do. Seven involved in personal services, that is, personal services for the individual, helping them shave whatever. And then there are the balance are for... They come to the house if they have a caretaker, 24/7 caretaker. They'll spend an hour or two at the house so the caretaker can go out and do things that they'll want, they want to do for a period of time. In these three categories, there was 1,426 hours, this is for the month of May. For the Homemaker Program, 41 hours for personal care and 49 for respite, which is what I could remember. We also had a quick review of the draft budget for next year. Many concerns because they have to get that budget put together relatively soon, yet they have no idea what they're getting from the state or federal governments. It's really a quandary for them, so they're just hoping they can get it done and get it approved. That's it.
Questions for Commissioner Collins? Thank you. I think you're the only one working this month. Homeland Security and Local Emergency Planning, please.
Homeland Security met on June 17. It was reported there were 18 drone callouts year-to-date for various purposes. All the pilots are licensed and certified. A reminder to all the Commissioners here, excuse me, that the Commissioner Active Shooting Drill will take place here August 1. And you don't get issued Kevlar, I'm sorry. We approve the purchase of drone software for incident command. What that effectively does, if I correct, Sheriff, is allow drones to go to the Incident Command Center in real time. Am I correct? Goes to the Incident Command Center in real time in event there's a problem. The, a reminder that the Norfolk Southern Prop Train has been approved to come here in May 26. That's a train that is pre, a boxcar, that is pre-rigged to show a hazardous situation. It will show, it will mock as if there is a chemical spill or a hazardous material spill and then the drills will be responding to that by the first responders to see how they would handle it. And those approval for funds for purchase of hazmat trading materials. That was it.
Questions for Commissioner Collins? Thank you. And rounding them out, Commissioner Collins, Michigan Works?
Michigan Works met on the 18th of this month. We did final approval of the current budget for the program. We approved the draft for the 25-26 budget year, which includes, which completes the deficit reduction plan. As you remember, I explained in the last meeting, there was a deficit, deficit problem in the budget because it wasn't due to any nefarious activity. Items were being placed in the wrong columns as the budget was being reported out. So it showed this budget with a lot of money left, this budget with none, and they had to do a deficit reduction program to balance these out. One thing they said that caused me a little concern at least is that when they're in the preparation, they, but their budget, based on Blue Cross and Blue Shield's requests from the state, they expect a 22% increase in healthcare costs for the next year, which means several budget errors have been reduced. That was it.
Questions for Commissioner Collins? Commissioner Martis?
Just a comment. We joke about the number of committees Commissioner Collins is covering. I just want to thank Commissioner Collins and the other retired Commissioners who are able to make themselves available because many of us know I'm getting close and aren't quite there yet, so I do appreciate you guys covering this stuff for us.
Thank you, Commissioner Martis. I think. Wellwise had their meeting on the third Wednesday of June. Basically, the meeting was to report out their implementation plan that's going to the state of Michigan and then a few words of warning on how that's going to fare out with the budget process. So the concern is right now is that the state will go right down to the last day to get the budget approved, so nobody's really going to know what the budget is. That implementation plan, by the way, is in your packet today, so for your perusal, but it's not, it won't be approved until it comes back from the state of Michigan. Questions? Commissioner Martis? Or, excuse me, Commissioner Collins?
Just a comment. That's creating a lot of angst for several of the agencies around because they have to develop budgets and really don't know what they're getting. There is no assurance that they will get whatever it is they need.
And that's the problem. I mean, Administrator Murphy and Administrator Elliott and myself all are in committees up there with Michigan Association of Counties and we've been advised that the House has got their budget, they've sent it on to the Senate, the Senate's not even going to meet on it until they understand how much federal funding is coming through, so it means like there will not be a state budget until the absolute last minute. So that's what they're planning on. Not very welcoming, open lancing these days. Questions? Thank you. Liaison reports. Veterans Affairs, Commissioner Collins?
Get back to it real quick. Veterans Affairs met on the 13th, indicated there were seven county burials for veterans, for those that qualified. The Veterans Relief Fund was approved for $3,499.40 for a mortgage and the balance was just discussion and the myriad of meetings the staff attended.
Questions for Commissioner Collins? Thank you, Terry. Did I miss anybody? Okay. Moving on to unfinished business, the next two items, Tecumseh Products Property and Lenawee Now Contract are both on the agenda just as updates to keep everyone informed and transparency of what's going on with those two. As everyone knows, they're active in the Commissioners' agenda for this year. So Tecumseh Products Property, who's reporting out on that?
Did you want, did you want me to? Okay. I can. So some of the things that we still, that we have going on at the Tecumseh Products location, we have ongoing mowing, which is what we, something that we budgeted for. We do have, and I think I had mentioned this a while back, Consumers Energy is doing some projects up and around the Tecumseh area and they were looking for a place to stage their vehicles overnight during that work that they're doing. And so we are agreeing to allow them to use a very specific and designated area on the Tecumseh Products side, or on the Tecumseh Products site, which is on the east side. We've talked to Jason Smith from Tecumseh Products and he has indicated a place that will be out of the way from the environmental work that is going on. And so maintenance is going to be marking that out so that consumers can utilize a portion of that property for their trucks for the months of July and August. Hopefully that's all they need. If their project runs a little bit longer, they may need it a little bit into September. Speaking of the environmental work, there is a second environmental company that is working on the project site right now with Tecumseh Products. It's a company called EHS. I have mentioned before that anyone who's watching the property may see some work going on and wonder what's happening. What they're looking to do is, as they've been entering chemicals into the, into the ground to do the treatment that they need to do, some of the more shallow areas aren't impacted as much as they had hoped that they would be, so they have to install another system in very specific areas to take care of that situation. So we may see some vehicles digging some ditches and doing some things on the south end of the property and maybe up around the Orbotech building as they work through that process. So if anyone sees those vehicles on there, that is not anyone who's purchased the property. We don't have any new construction going on or anything like that. It's just continual work that Tecumseh Products is doing as they are obligated to do. And the final thing is, we are, we had had a joint meeting for the city of Tecumseh and the county officials to meet, to discuss the property and what we may see going forward. We unfortunately had to cancel that meeting. It was scheduled for June 23 and so we are working on getting that meeting rescheduled. That's about what I have for my update.
And I would just add to that, we have had one site renewed visit by a potential purchaser a couple of weeks ago and we have another one that's coming up. So nothing, nothing pending, but there are people visiting the property. So if you see people walking around over there Tecumseh, that's what's going on. We'll keep you appraised of how we're moving forward there. Any questions on Commissioner Martis?
And to that end, because we're seeing continued interest in the property, I move that we make the Tecumseh Products property available for sale with no county-imposed restrictions on land use.
I have a motion by Commissioner Martis, supported by Commissioner Daley. Discussion. Commissioner Stimson?
There's a lot. One, we started this conversation tonight with an update with no action items and now we have an action item. So that's a little disconcerting, but in any kind of commercial property deal, there's a lot more to it than just simply saying we want to sell something. So I'm not against developing that property. In fact, I'm in favor of developing that properly, that property properly. And I just don't want some sort of ad hoc, you know, throw together something just to get it sold, because that's not necessarily what's the best for the community, which I represent. And so my question before we just throw it for sale is typically when you would do something like this, there's a lot more involved, like you'd utilize perhaps a professional company to handle that. Those types of sites are marketable to specific types of developers. Usually experts are brought in and from the development side that would counsel the municipality on how to do that, what would be available, things of that nature. So I'm not against the fact that we would want to look to maybe market that property, but it seems hasty to just say, all right, we're going to sell it without restrictions. That seems not in the best interest of the county to receive what its best and fair market value would be for that particular property, nor would it be what's best for the city of Tecumseh. So while I'm not against selling it, I don't want to do it hastily, so perhaps that discussion needs to be fed it out. Maybe that can be brought up, put on the agenda, discussed properly, get input from the various different stakeholders that might have input before we make a hasty decision.
Commissioner Collins?
I have a couple of concerns about, about, just let's see it quickly. One is I have to be assured that the county will not be held liable for any further remediation or cleanup or anything once that property is sold. I would hate to see us sell that property until, by the way, you have to do all this remediation because it was your property prior to it. Second, and I have made this statement only one time, back several times, I've kind of loathed, I like to be a good neighbor of the city of Tecumseh, I've kind of loathed to put a smokestack right in the middle of town. And talk about factories in the middle of several towns, well, back during the war, factories were built and the communities developed around them. In Adrian, we have the American Chain Cable, several companies that were built and then the communities developed around them. Well, that's not the case anymore. Am I right or wrong, gentlemen? There is an industrial district in Tecumseh for factory construction? You can respond.
I want to say who you are, Dan.
Dan Swallow, City Manager for the city of Tecumseh. Yeah, in fact, there's a significant portion of the property as exists today that's a zone industrial commercial that would allow light industrial uses. That remains true. We did do some rezonings, as the county is aware, where the Evan Street frontage is now mostly commercial. So there are some restrictions in that regard from the zoning standpoint, so. But there is a significant portion of property that still is what we call IC or industrial commercial that will allow for some light industrial uses. And there are many other areas around the community as well.
I could understand light industrial, but for heavy industrial work, you have a industrial site where somebody could locate, as does Adrian, as do most cities now, because they want to remove the smokestacks from downtown in the city. So for those two and a couple of other reasons, I'm a little bit leery about jumping into it right now. I would rather questions be answered, particularly any liability, any and all liability we may have as a result of that sale.
Discussion. I guess I'd like a clarification, Commissioner Martis. I mean, I think the intent of the motion, and I believe, but you may want to explain, is that we had a motion that says that it was restricted from industrial, anybody from industrial, and nothing could do, be done with it for the next four years. You're just, we're just trying to get an idea of how many Commissioners are interested in the potential of marketing this product, or property, right?
Well, we continue to get inquiries and the basis of the inquiries is, is this even available for sale?
Yeah.
I want to clarify that. Secondly, we don't need to enforce any zoning restrictions. As Mr. Swallow's already emphasized, they have zoning restrictions in place that protect the community in accordance with the expressed will of that community. And so my only purpose is to not impose restrictions here when they're not necessary. The city of Tecumseh has full control over the land use there and we don't need to take additional action or apply additional burdens. Finally, we're not selling it to anybody tonight. Anybody who wants to make an offer will certainly make a contingent upon receiving the appropriate approvals from the city of Tecumseh, full understanding of the environmental risks and liabilities, and we'll have a chance to negotiate that in good faith. Right now, none of those things are in front of us. It's simply a matter of saying our position is that we would like to see somebody pursue that. Yes, later we can talk about marketing it and see where we're at and I agree with all that. Maybe we want to pursue a relationship with the Detroit Regional Partnership, who is marketing, I think, at least one property with the land bank now. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Yeah, so, I mean, those things are all down the road. This is simply to make sure the status is clear, that we have an interest in making this property productive.
Discussion. Commissioner Stimson?
Administrator Murphy, have you shown the property to people? Because I've not been aware of any people walking around or the Administrator's office sending anything out to any Commissioners about site visits or interest or any of that stuff.
I'll take that question because I was the one that was there and asked Administrator Murphy to join me, and that's the reason we're giving you an update today, to let you know that people have been there looking at the property.
But my question was for the Administrator. No offense, Mr. Chairman, but have you shown the property to respect to people? Are you aware of some other ones that's come? They come, my point being is, we had previously talked about, if you've got something as a Commissioner, redirect it to the Administrator's office, because that's the person who handles those things on behalf of the county. We set policies. We don't show properties. So that's really kind of the question there and I'm asking the Administrator, has she shown the property or do we have rogue people wandering around the property?
I will tell you that I was asked, I was advised that we do had, we did have a party that was interested, so I did ask to attend that and I did work with Commissioner Van Doren through that with those individuals. I also made aware there's been another party who has expressed interest and have been invited to attend that walkthrough also. who has expressed interest and have been invited to attend that walkthrough also.
So they already scheduled the walkthrough? And then they invited you to attend, or?
I have not had any particular entity contact me directly, if that's the question, that they've.
You've not spoken to any specific people?
Not outside of the two instances I just spoke to.
I just want to be clean. The typical process in any of this would be to hand the administrator for the entity, whether it's a city or county or whatever, that's the person directed at that. That's the person who has the ability to go on the site. You're not exposing it to unknown people, liabilities of walking around the site, all the things that go on with that. That's why we redirect it to the administrator's office. That was my standing instructions, and I understand that's what we're supposed to be doing.
Well, we appointed a subcommittee to make those decisions.
And that's what they said they were going to do. So that's why I'm asking.
And the subcommittee did, was aware of this and did make the decisions to make the tours.
I sit on that subcommittee, and I was not aware. Nobody told me anything about that.
There was reasons for that.
Because you withheld information from members of the subcommittee?
No. Not going to get into that tonight. Any other discussion?
Roll call vote, please.
Any other discussion? Okay, would the clerk please call the roll?
Could I ask, Commissioner Martas, could you repeat the motion so I have it correct?
I'll do my best.
Okay. I'll tell you what I have, because it was.
My motion was to make the Tecumseh Products Property available for sale with no county imposed restrictions on land use.
That's okay. Okay. Thank you. Great. Commissioner Tillotson? Commissioner Van Doren?
Yes.
Commissioner Unst?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanco?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins? Commissioner Daley? Commissioner Krasny?
Yes.
Commissioner Martis?
Yes.
Commissioner Stimson?
No.
We have six yes and three no's.
Motion passes. So moving on to, is there any other discussion on the Tecumseh Products Property updates? Okay, moving on to Lenaway Now Contract. You reporting out on that, Commissioner Martas?
Yeah, I'd be glad to do that. As you know, we have a committee appointed of Commissioner Krasny, myself, and Administrator Murphy to work towards developing or pursuing a contractual relationship with Lenaway Now. Administrator Murphy has met once with Pat Farber, and have you talked to him a second time by phone? Okay, so she's met. I've met with Tim Robinson and Pat Farber and talked to Pat several times in the meantime. We are looking at the options. We all agree so far that there needs to be measurable objectives. We also agree that there needs to be clear lines of communication between us, to the point that we are proposing a liaison appointment so that somebody, a member of the commission, would meet once a quarter with them to see what's going on and stay in good communication. And also are agreeing that Lenaway Now's about on the verge of triggering the federal independent audit threshold with the dollar amounts from the feds. And once they reach that point, they would, of course, make that independent audit available to us. So we've had a few scheduling issues, but we will continue to move forward through the summer, and we hope to bring more information and something more concrete back to the county. Pat and Tim also furnished a long list of the items they're working on. One of the things we've identified to them that appears to be important to the community and to the commission is that we find a way for to get them involved in the issue of the supply of housing in the county. They have some entities there that are working on that already. And so it's, one of the options might be that we would tie some of the funding to their ability to, you know, bring people in place to help facilitate that, like Housing North, where they pursue grants and other support to help bring outside money into the county to pursue development. So that's where we're at at this point.
Questions for Commissioner Martas? Or any of the other subcommittee members, which are Commissioner Krasny and the administrator? Any questions? Okay, thank you for that update. New business? Public comment? Any public comment on, from the public? This is open for any particular issue.
Yes, I'll get back up again. Thanks, Matthew Witty from 6766 North Raisin Center Highway. You've already got that. I'm just compelled to give another update on election integrity. I've been here a number of times. You know, a lot has been happening in the last few months in that particular arena. In the month of March, I think on March 25th, President Trump put out an executive order to, with quite a few rules, I would say, that allow us to, as a community, begin to clean up elections, federal elections, but we certainly have to work at the local level. I think one of the most significant aspects of that was the certification of all election systems has to be redone. And I think the date by that is sometime in September. So it has to be done relatively quickly. And not just recertify according to the old standards, but to a set of new standards that have to be worked out. You know, I don't have a hand in that personally, but that's just one of the things that, you know, everybody in the room should be aware of. As far as developments go, there was a court case that came to conclusion last week in Denver, Colorado, in federal court, where Mike Lindell, a particular person who has been outspoken nationwide regarding election integrity, won his court case of defamation against the voting machine manufacturers. And that's really important to everybody in the room because it, you know, I think goes a long way to coach the lawfare that has been suppressing people from being able to speak their mind about irregularities with the election. And as a result of that, President Trump has requested a special prosecutor to be installed to investigate irregularities in the 2020 election. There's an awful lot that went on. Now, I've been preaching about it for a long time because of my technical background and the data that I've had access to, things that I'm fully aware of that are now becoming public knowledge. So I'm not just standing here flapping my jaw and talking to people. It's actually beginning to take root. And we've got about, I think, 16 months until the midterm election. And I think every one of us in this room has to be aware. Elections affect all of us. We need them to be proper. We've been following all the rules here in Lenaway County, but we still don't get the appropriate result that reflects the, the will of the voters because of irregularities. And really, we have problems at the state level, state law level, and quite a few other things in the background. I'm not here to talk about all that, but just to know that it's on the public record now as a count of the lawsuit that was settled in Denver on behalf of Mike Lindell. So it's just very important. I recommend that everybody become more aware of it. I'm certainly available for consultation to people. Also, part of the public effort is to train people to hand count elections. There may be people in the room that say, oh, we can't do that. But I think we all need to be prepared to do it. My wife and I are trained to do that. We do offer trainings. And if anybody would like to talk to me, I'd be happy to invite you and set up. It takes an hour of your time, and we can show you how to do it, how important it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, sir? Please state your name and your place of residency.
Stephen Wilson, Blissfield Township. I just want to make a comment about the Products Property. I do not understand why any commissioner would not get on board with getting rid of that boondoggle. We spent way more money than it was valued at, and all we do is continue to pour money into it by taking care of testing, by taking care of mowing, and that doesn't come free. It's all at the taxpayers' expense. So why anybody would not get on board to get rid of that thing makes no sense to me. I think you need to reconsider your positions and get moving on this thing to get rid of it out of our hands. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
My name is Leandre. I live in Raisin Township. And I looked at the voting record of our Senator Joe Polino recently, and he voted against the the use of the schools passing a rule against cell phones. And, but that did pass in the legislature. And so I thought it might be helpful if the county commissioners made a statement saying that they agree with this, with the rule that was passed in Lansing, saying that schools are required to have a rule against classroom use of cell phones. So if you're of that mind, I encourage you to make that public. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Roberts? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm here on a much more happy note. It's City of Adrian. Oh, I'm so sorry. Mary Roberts, City of Adrian. And I am the Adrian Bicentennial Committee Chairperson. And so next weekend, starting tonight, or starting a week from tonight, is our bicentennial celebration. We start next Thursday night, July 3rd, and it runs through Sunday, July 6th. Love to have you all join for one thing or all of it, all days. It's going to be a great celebration. And if anyone in the audience doesn't know about it, you can go to the City of Adrian website and find the bicentennial information there. So hopefully, we'll see you there next weekend and pray for good weather.
Thank you. And hopefully, the Raisin River Ragtime Review will be there to entertain us.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other public comment? Thank you. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Collins?
I want to make something clear. I am not opposed to selling the property Tecumseh. Not opposed at all. But I'm opposed, as I said, unless I get assurance that the county of Lenaway, the county government, and all of you people are not held liable for any further remediation of the problems of that property. I don't know. It may be, and it may be, may be able to be done by contract. I just have a concern that we sell it, and the people sit on it forever and don't remediate it. We have to take it back, and we have to remediate it. As of now, if I'm not correct, are there other entities paying for the remediation? Am I correct?
Right.
Currently, Tecumseh Products is required to remediate the property and have been given standards in which they need to bring it up to. So they will be on the property until those requirements have been met, and they will be funding that.
And if we sell it and get it back, they are no longer responsible for the cleanup, am I correct?
They are continuously required by EPA and a number of other agencies to continue the cleanup, no matter who the owner is of the property.
So I have to be concerned that we don't have any other liabilities with that property. And I, you know, I grew up on Erie Street in Adrian, a half a block from American Chain and Cable. I lived next to a factory all night long. They're every night of the week, every single night. I get used to it after a while. But after a fashion, you don't want to live there. What does it do to the value of the homes in the area? But I have no, I have no opposition aside that property, is what people think. I just want to make sure the county is okay having sold it. And Tecumseh is okay having sold it.
Other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Unst?
I can share the concerns that Commissioner Collins has as far as the liability.